All right, regular meeting of the Glencoe Board of Trustees, 7:00 PM and 14:00 Central. Come to order. Roll call. Shawna?
Here.
Terry?
Here.
Skip?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
Y'all is here. Item three is the Ministerial Office of the newly elected members of the Glencoe Board of Trustees. The three of them left.
Y'all will stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Just not yet, you're good. You didn't, uh, wasn't your term yet. Oklahoma.
The Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Office of Trustee.
That I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
To procure my nomination.
To procure my nomination.
Election or appointment.
Election or appointment.
Except necessary and proper expense.
Except necessary and proper expense.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not knowingly violated.
That I have not knowingly violated.
Any election law of the state.
Any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done.
Or procured it to be done.
By others in my behalf.
By others in my behalf.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Make sure, Alyssa, they get assigned some time in the meeting.
Okay, item four is consideration discussion of possible action concerning the Glencoe Board of Trustees declaring the mayor John Cune vacant under Oklahoma Statutes 11-8-108. Okay, so you want to ask your question on that?
What is this about? I mean, what is this?
This is about me missing those meetings.
So how far are we going back? Just the last four months, or what do we have here?
Uh, Alyssa, do your call the ones that you verified.
Back to the beginning of this fiscal year, uh, first meeting's August 12th, and then it coordinates with the law when she get to October 14th.
So is...
So we're going, we're going way back from...
And if, that's what was brought to, yes, that's what was brought to the town's attention, that John had missed more than half of all the meetings, uh, held within any four consecutive months.
And that was back in October.
And I think, I don't know if it starts in August or October, but there were...
They got it started July 8th.
Special meetings ended up creating more than just the normal one meeting a month. I, I think is what, is what I looked at, but you may have...
Well, there was only one special meeting. The one on October 18th was just public works, so that's not com- it's not computed or stipulation.
But it's on here. We've got two special meetings, one August 26th and one October 18th, so they're both on here.
It was still a special meeting, but it was a public work, so it's not calculated into the...
Did you say the, uh, see what you, uh, you say the 14th was with that one?
So there was only the one special meeting on August 26th.
Okay, so why guess my question is, how come we didn't address this in October?
Yeah, why would we just wait until now?
Why did we wait till now?
It was just brought to the attention.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
It was just brought to the attention.
Oh.
Yeah, no one was, to my knowledge, no one was aware of it until now.
No, I probably wasn't aware of it yet.
So since the last meeting, it's been brought to my attention?
Yes.
I asked Alyssa to, to confirm it with what her records show, which would be, you know, it's her job as town clerk to keep those records, and I think what you were presented there is what, what her records show.
Yeah, that's true, and I did go back and verify it, and it's...
So starting from the beginning of any month, not a partial month, but you're starting at the beginning of a month through a four-month period.
Yes.
If, if there was more than half missed, then, but the vacancy doesn't occur until it's actually brought to the attention of the council, and the council would take, take action. That's when they... The, the council is the one with the authority to declare the vacancy.
But they have to declare, but yeah, right.
Well, if, if by law, there was more than half the meetings missed during that four, four-month period, then it would certainly be advisable to, because by law, uh, otherwise it could go contrary to the statute, and then any, any action taken in the future, now that the town's aware of it going forward, could be, could be questioned, uh, the validity of that action because of if it relied upon your vote or not.
They're allowed to vote.
Uh, you, you are allowed to vote, you're entitled to more notice and due process, you're entitled to a hearing if you want to hear.
Don't, don't need it. I don't think it... So I'm just kind of surprised it came down to this late in the, in the year before it got noticed. Okay, so you guys need to make the vote? Motion, I won't make that motion, but somebody can make that motion. Shawna, if you'd like to do that.
I will make the motion to declare the seat of trustee John Cune vacant under State Statute 11-8-108.
I'll say it. Okay, motion been made to re-declare the Board of Trustees' seat vacant under Oklahoma State Statute 11-8-108. All in favor, Shawna?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and John will say, yes.
Or yes, okay.
All right, now, Texas Department number five.
So that will, will, that one will move to Vice Mayor now, correct?
Well...
Since he does technically make that.
Shawna, it doesn't make difference.
We're actually, we're, okay, we're, we're actually at the point where all the new terms started as of noon today. So on a normal month's meeting, we would have it on here, like you can see, seven and eight, electing a mayor and electing a vice mayor. So, so whether that had occurred or not, the board would have been tasked with, with electing a mayor and vice mayor today.
Absolutely, so my question is for the next line item, Susan is still our current vice mayor until we get down to that next line item.
Yes, I understand your question.
So Susan will take this line item and...
Sure, yes, sure.
So we're going with, uh, fine item five, consideration discussion and possible action concerning appointing, appointment for the open board of trustees seat. I am going to make a motion that we, uh, appoint John to the vacant seat.
Do I hear a second? Anybody go ahead and say it.
So that one's going to die for lack of second, correct?
That's correct.
So I will make a motion that we leave that seat vacant, uh, for at least the next month, bring it back to the table because we have 60 days to reappoint that seat, correct?
You do have 60 days before you have to, before you have to call and pay for a special election.
So my motion is to leave it open for, and bring it back next month for appointment.
You'll have to have a second, go for it, I can't speak.
No.
Second.
So motion's been made in seconds, uh, all in favor of Shawna?
Yes.
Terry?
Good.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan, no.
Okay, well, see, you guys.
Okay, so does seven and eight go away, or what? I mean...
No, still need to do seven and eight, because like I said, the term started today again.
So number six is Ministerial Office to newly appointed Board of Trustees.
Oh, six go away, seven and eight, yeah, you're on the seven.
Number seven's consideration discussion of possible action concerning electing a mayor.
You have any motions?
Can we put that up for the 38?
You don't need a mayor for that period of time.
We have to appoint somebody right now?
Well, you, I mean, you may run into a lot of things where you end up with a special meeting before your next meeting, or you need a mayor to take action.
Okay.
Well, it's good.
You, you're directed by law to elect a mayor at the first meeting, regular meeting after the new terms take effect.
All right, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we appoint, uh, Terry Leisnik as our mayor.
One second, Doc.
Motion and second has been made to appoint Terry Leisnik as mayor, all in favor of Shawna?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan, no.
I'll give a vote.
Does he get to vote? My back, Terry, my back.
I don't believe I'll be mayor this long.
So that's two and two.
That's two and two, so that, that fails.
Okay. I'll, uh, make a motion to appoint Shawna as mayor. A second.
Motion has been made to make Shawna mayor in seconds, all in favor of Shawna?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan, no. So now does she take the order?
Yeah.
Okay, so move seven and four.
Skip.
Number eight, consideration discussion and possible action concerning electing Vice Mayor. I'm going to make a motion that we elect Terry Leisnik as mayor.
A second.
All in favor of Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan, no. All right, brings us...
Can you even vote?
Oh, yes, sorry. Brings us to item nine, consent agenda, approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting held March 10th, 2025, approval of the general fund purchase orders, approval of the cemetery fund purchase orders, approval of the police fund purchase orders, approval of the meter fund purchase orders, approving renewal of the tower contract with Pro Value Net, and approval of the annual vaccination date being June, being June 7th, 2025. I, I would like to pull the Pro Value off and discuss it step by step.
So is that a motion to approve all of them except that item?
I make a motion to approve all of those except for the Pro Value, uh, caper agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made in seconds, all in favor of Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
I just wondered why we want to pull it.
I just want, we'll talk, we'll talk about the detail of it the next.
All right. Yes.
Susan?
Yeah, I mean, where does this at? I'm, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about here, where should pull it from?
Pulling it from the consent agenda. Should be in the packet.
Yes.
And Shawna votes yes. Brings us to item 10, consideration discussion and possible action concerning items removed from the consent agenda. On the tower lease agreement with Pro Value Net, I, I know, like in particular, the county has a tower agreement for Pro Value as well, and they provide us with internet, which I know that they provide here in the park, uh, but they also provide us with a, a telephone service at our office. It's the, the VoIP phone service, and looking at the, uh, purchase orders, it looks like we pay like $250 a month for...
Yeah, what's crazy is, um, Shelby has had to fight consistently for the last like 20 years to get it down to that price, so I'm all for it, I think.
Meaning I'm, I'm happy to reach out to Matt and Drew with Pro Value to see what we can get worked out. We, like I said, we use them at the county for our phone service and have fewer issues whatsoever. We have to pay the taxes, the E911 taxes and the state and federal stuff that goes along with that, but I think our bill is $50 a month.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
And they provide the phones and everything. Okay, so I will make a motion to table the Pro Value, uh, tower lease agreement, um, that I would make some calls to see what kind of phone service state provided less or...
I'll second your motion.
All right, motion has been made in seconds, all in favor of Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan? And Shawna votes yes. Public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, or personal references, if it happened, anything. All right, here now we will move on. Number 12, consideration discussion and possible action concerning awarding bids for the REIT grant number 33 for the project located on the 300 block of West, uh, of Main Street.
I will, these, these are printed on the after, but, um, he advertised for bids for the 300 block of Main Street and only got one, which was curbs, and the grant was $65,000. The bid came in at 56-808, but he's not sure that the unit price is correct, so we got to table that, get it to the press and see if that's a correct amount, and then we'll move forward from there, so we're just gonna table it.
Okay. I will make a motion to table line 12, uh, awarding the REIT grant.
Second.
Motion has been made in seconds to table, uh, line 12 for the REIT grant, all in favor of Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Number 13, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the open records request made by Glencoe Board Trustee Shawna Bell to the Glencoe Fire Department on March 3rd, 1st. I just checking the status to see where we are working on getting the items requested.
I have, I have requested.
No, if you look at my actual request, you'll find it there. Um, I did not get a recording of the meeting, nor did I get the supporting documents that were presented.
Okay, well, I mean, so I need to be clarified on this. Am I supposed to go by what your office at Pan County tells me that I'm supposed to go off of? If anybody has a open records request from your office, it has to be on official letterhead.
We have a...
This email, it's not, not an official letterhead.
We...
So I went through on this right here. We don't have agendas, you know that. The roll call was on there, you did get the minute meetings, and the recording, how long am I supposed to keep that? Is there a law how I'm supposed to keep that? Because if the minutes are done, I believe. And if you look down here...
I'm still not of the opinion that that was a fire department meeting, so, so now, I, I don't, my opinion is the town can certainly direct whoever has whatever the records that are requested to produce those records, but just like if it were the Youth Baseball Association, if you direct the auxiliary organization, they're a separate entity, so you couldn't, some, you know, as an example, you couldn't direct the Youth Baseball Association to produce records. If it was an auxiliary meeting, you can't, can't part of the auxiliary crew those records. Now, since Thursday, I was provided with a copy of the bylaws. I'm not the attorney for the Fire Department Auxiliary. They may want to consider seeking counsel so they can be advised on this. From what I can tell, if those are the correct bylaws, then whatever this meeting was, didn't actually have any voting members of the auxiliary there, because, at least according to the bylaws that you provided me, the fire department members are not voting members of the auxiliary, because I understand there was one auxiliary member there.
The only auxiliary.
Only the, well, and see, I'd say, so I would say, if you were asking me what the status was, my answer would be, well, I want to see a membership list, I don't know what the status of the auxiliary is, but to me, this looks like an auxiliary meeting. It follows the bylaws of the auxiliary in the sense that it was at the fire department and it only covered auxiliary business. Now, regardless of my opinion, the town can, you have it on the agenda, you can take action to direct those documents to be produced. If they are public record, they need to be produced. If they are the auxiliary records, then I don't know that they have to listen to the town's direction because they're a separate entity, but you can certainly direct that, but that was just my opinion. As far as what I saw, the meeting only covered auxiliary business and therefore had been an auxiliary meeting, and the auxiliary is a separate entity from the town, and so anyhow, that hasn't changed. I don't know what the status of the membership is, I don't know if those are the bylaws. If those are the bylaws, it would look to me, again, just my two cents, that the auxiliary has an issue because whatever action they took at that meeting was invalid because none of those people have voting rights under those bylaws. But again, I don't know if those bylaws are legitimate because I'm not the attorney for the auxiliary.
And then again, it's not fair, since you did bring up the bylaws, it is not fair. I mean, if the town isn't sitting there and vote on this, where is the bylaws? That is a question that the fire department needs auxiliary.
But here, let me clarify, all that's being voted on is, I mean, whatever possible action the town would want to take in regards to the mayor's open records request.
Okay, so if we want to be technical about that, uh, down here on this official, uh, statement here that says that what Shawna has requested and everything, um, I requested, we don't have agendas, she knows that, so that was not on there, uh, roll call was, the minutes was, the recording, if you look down here on copies provided, it says many minutes and recording. So if I was a vindictive little witch, I could say, tell you, what, what happened to the recording?
Again, if it's a fire department, if it was a fire department meeting, it would be...
Yeah, envelope was closed, I just assumed that you put what you requested in and opened it for...
That assumption is giving you...
Well, again, the auxiliary, the auxiliary can produce anything voluntarily that it chooses, it can produce anything it wants voluntarily. It's an issue of whether the town has authority to direct the records from this meeting to be produced, and, and I have not seen anything to satisfy me that it was a fire department meeting, thank you.
Okay, so my, my argument back on that is on the handwritten minutes that I was provided, it had a list of the fire department members present, and at the bottom it had a list of the fire department members who were absent. The group meet was not sent to the auxiliary because there are other auxiliary members. Cassie Bush is a very active auxiliary member. She had no idea about this that week, so...
Well, I mean, technically, you should, I mean, print a copy. The handwritten, the handwritten notes, if you look at the top, it says fire auxiliary meeting.
Yeah, but the members of the fire department...
Doesn't matter, like he done said it, like he's already been told.
I would just clarify, I would just clarify, the fire department members are also auxiliary organization members, but they are not voting members under those bylaws that were provided.
That's, that, that's double good name then, I mean, how...
No, if you read the bylaws, read the bylaws.
How do we have authority over the fire department that we don't, but they're members of the auxiliary?
Yeah, well, just like you would have authority over the fire department member if they were handling fire department business, but if they go to the Youth Baseball Association and have a Youth Baseball Association meeting, and one of your fire department members takes notes during that meeting, you can't force him to produce those notes, him or her, right? They, they do wear two hats. They are fire department members, as mentioned in the bylaws of the fire auxiliary, but it's a separate entity. So the, the crux of the question to me would be whether you have any authority to direct the auxiliary meeting to produce the records. If it was a fire department meeting, and that was my first understanding, is, well, somewhere the fire department had a meet, and so it's like, okay, well, that's subject to open records request, but then I come to find out, it's, doesn't appear like it was a fire department meeting, it appears like it was a fire auxiliary meeting. They only cover fire auxiliary business. Now, they could have been completely incorrect about who their membership was or who had voting authority. So in other words, the validity of whatever action they took at that meeting may be completely invalid under the auxiliary department, right? But nevertheless, it's still an auxiliary function, it's an auxiliary meeting. But, but here again, the town can take whatever direction it wants, you can vote on it and direct those records to be produced, it's just an issue of whether whoever has that in their capacity as an auxiliary member has to produce it, because it wouldn't be a public record.
But that would, what would be the difference in us having a special meeting to approve a park board, or a, a park rental and call it a park board meeting? I mean, it's no difference. I mean, Friends of the Park is, is saying we're going to do this, there's no difference, I mean...
The auxiliary is a separate entity. Now, they share, they share members, they are the same individuals, some of them, they're the same individuals, but these fire department members don't have voting rights, again, assuming those are the bylaws, but it's still, they're members under the bylaws, they're fire department members. I don't know if there's only one auxiliary member. We talked about the membership list, you mentioned that there's other auxiliary members. I don't represent the auxiliary, but I don't know the process of the auxiliary goes, like, how do you know that's not an auxiliary meeting is what I, it, it covered only auxiliary business. So that's why, that's my advice. But again, you can take whatever action you see fit, right? You can decide, well, the board, here's whatever I'm babbling about, and decides regardless, we are directing the fire department to produce whatever occurred at that meeting. Now, the fire department might say, we didn't have a meeting, and the auxiliary might say, you don't have any authority to produce it, but that's another issue.
Uh, I just, I think it's shady to provide half the information and not all of it.
Can I ask what, what's half of it? You want the minutes, the 80 minutes, I gave you the handwritten ones, and I gave you the literally from auto to text, word for word. I don't have the recording on me. I was gone the weekend that it was transferred over to text when I got the minutes done, that Sunday and Monday. I believe in it.
But what about, I think it said that there were two people recording. I think it said that you were the...
Then ask them, I'm not going to sit there and come deal it.
Just be careful, there might be three people recording missing the...
For sure.
You don't have the authority to go to that gentleman today's and now and then and produce his records. It's, it's all I'm trying to make sure we do it correctly.
And when the chief and the vice mayor at the time were both stated in the meeting minutes as recording?
Okay.
That's, that's where I'm getting at.
So, so, and no one did not say that we were, that both of us were recording. We said we had, that we are recording this meeting. That is what we were instructed to do. So yes, my phone was right there, everybody's seen it.
That's, I, we'll, we'll just let that one be done, but I do want to point out that, uh, at the end of the day, as a reminder in that aspect, I don't have to submit an open records request, just like you would. Like, if you needed something from Alyssa, you don't have to come up here and submit an open records request. As a trustee, you have the authority to review whatever it is at any given time. We don't have to submit open records requests as elected officials over the community.
To, to the extent that the information, I mean, that, that really...
As long as it is...
In all the cases.
Yes. As long as it is town.
Were you directed that you had to produce, or had to provide an open records request?
Um, I just told her that it would be wise to submit an open records request, but I requested it from, at the time, the assistant chief, and he, it wasn't provided.
Okay, I was curious about the process.
So we'll just let that be. Okay, consideration discussion and possible actions concerning, Alyssa, there's a line, you have to see the officers under Glencoe's volunteer...
Make a motion, we go ahead and let Alyssa?
Oh, it doesn't need a motion, I'm just going to get black and white.
Yeah, that's good.
Then he can fill out the forms, you know, we're going to...
Providing, we'll do that.
Yeah, well, we need to make sure that we get a new recognition and receiving suggestions on it. Uh, consideration discussion and possible action concerning appointing a current member of the Glencoe Fire Department as the town of Glencoe's representative for the Pan County Enhanced 911 or EY911 communication facility.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys remember, but last meeting or the meeting before chance actually took that position because Jeff had wanted to sit down, um, and every town has to have a representative, we have no representative on the board, so that's just something that the fire department maybe needs to keep in mind.
Yeah, I'll get the...
We'll need to know who that is so that we can send the...
Yeah. I'll get the...
Okay, so we'll just bring this back, uh, table it for next. Should I make a motion to table it for next?
You can, or you could obviously request it, you put on your campaign.
All right, uh, 16, consideration discussion and possible action concerning renewing the county's municipal subsidy with Great Plains Bank or what they bank offering the best interest rate.
I'll make a motion, I'll agree to it.
Is, is Great Plains our best?
Is, is Great Plains our best? Yeah, they came back today and they, they beat everybody else's five dollars. Like, four point four percent a month and four point three something for nine months, but it's still just knocks everybody else out of the park.
Okay. Motion has been made in second, that we renew the town's municipal 4CD with Great Plains Bank. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan is, Shawna votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning the Glynco, Wayne, Anderson, Arenas and Ventura.
I brought this up because it's, uh, we need to make sure, we're getting a lot of stuff. We have got to make sure that we have their inventory in, uh, where all that stuff is. So, and it's also on their board meeting for just now.
And they're also going to have a list, uh, coming up, surplus numbers. I talked to Bruce today, they're missing a few social, uh, serial numbers and then surplus, some of the stuff they bought has been broken, but.
So you feel like so far they're doing a job of getting new inventory from the board?
So we will do no action on seventeen. Eighteen, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the one hundred and forty-four dollars and seventeen cent overage for the Glynco Arenas previous purchase approval of supplies not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Whenever they were giving us the cost estimates for this last month, I don't think they accounted for shipping and handling, so it just went over by that hundred and forty-four seventeen. We just need to, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew that they went over that and approved it. We did already go ahead and pay it. Shipping and handling was included on one of those invoices, but it did come out over the eighty-nine and fifty. And that still keeps them under their statute.
I'm thinking. All right, I will make a motion to approve the one hundred and forty-four dollars and seventeen cent overage to the Glynco Arena Ward's previous purchase approval.
Okay.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Uh, nineteen, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the Huesman violation located in three seventeen West Main Street listed under chapter twenty, section five of the Glynco Town Code.
Okay, this is Terry Daniels property, Main Street. What about?
I don't know.
It's up to you. All right. So I bring up the property line. As far as you can see, that the, the green block is his property. And then there's the sidewalk, even using it in front. And we've had several complaints because of the U-Haul trailers that are parked either on the sidewalk Eastman or directly in front of the U-Haul building and it's obstructing traffic, so.
When you look at this thing, I mean, this is actually what's recorded. It sits in the Eastman, but the sidewalk trailer is right there west of it. You guys being the dominant property owner, me being the servant, I can still use it as long as you guys need to use it for utilities or whatever, we can move the equipment out. There's never been a sidewalk even since I bought it off Skip. I mean, that's been there since it's a gas station.
I think the issue is, even though there's no sidewalk that's paved right there, we should still have the Eastman and people are unable to walk that sidewalk all the way down, so that's just probably looking for.
It is a dangerous intersection right there, so do you have, do you have those out there?
This is a lot and block. So is that great line depicting the edge of the lot? Because if that's the case, this is all clouded street. So what you would own would end right here. You own this lot and this, this is all street. It's not an Eastman, it's actually, it's actually dedicated right away. See, this, this lot.
Let's see, it starts from forty, forty foot to the center, and this is what's.
Yeah, that's not indicating ownership of this, so. Unless that, either one of these is wrong then, because this in terms of what's being shown, maybe this is center line of the roadway.
Bought it off the skip, this was done by a surveyor.
Yes. I bet if you get the original, uh, town plat, it'll show an eighty foot road there.
How big was that, eighty?
It's not on page.
That's what Shelley said, and those never have, ever since we made sense of gas stations. So like all this, that's why they put ground and all that, it never shows sidewalks.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I think, like, your ownership of.
It is.
Ends at that.
Exactly correct.
Yeah.
So this goes to the end right here. See, it goes from there to there.
Well, right, see, so here's road, so, so you own this, this must be lot thirteen.
That's the plot, just here. So this is the edge of the street right here, where you just put that X.
Yeah, it's eighty foot, yeah, it's eighty foot. So, so what you purchased from Skip would have been lot thirteen.
I'm, I'm a servant owner, so I can use that and he has.
I'm, well, I'm with you on your survey and not survey, I'm with you on that. If this were like a town Eastman across back here, if there was like an Eastman across your property. What I'm actually saying is, you don't own this property, you own this lot line to here.
That's, that's correct.
This is dedicated.
What they're arguing is, is this right here on the sidewalk, this little bit right here. That's what they're arguing.
Not on this side? So it's, so it's not this, it's not these things, these things look like they're out in the street.
They, they pretty much are.
I mean, these are out in the street.
That's on the grass, not here.
I know, but this is eighty foot of this is.
This is.
It's essentially on both sides.
Okay, so that's part of the street too, up on here, it's part of the street.
If that's part of the street, then the city needs to start maintaining it and paving it and everything else.
Well, we can, if there are U-Haul trailers sitting on top of it.
That's fine, if the city can start maintaining it, I'll take one.
Well, that may be a different discussion, but.
If you guys want to pay for the maintaining of these things.
That is a different discussion. We're just talking about U-Haul.
As far as this goes.
That's where it's going to go.
Sure, as this goes, so.
When you guys repave Main Street, I want that paved all the way.
Well, I mean, this town still has the discretion to determine where, whether they want a period, that's a space here that runs between, but, I mean, you can have that discussion, pave it all the way up, sure. But yeah, that's all I'm trying to say is to clarify, it's not like you own it here and then, and then at some point a previous owner.
This right here shows ownership, that's where the, the pens are.
Okay, okay, and so aren't we agreeing that those corners right there are these corners right here?
We're agreeing with that corner there and that corner right there, that sits.
Obviously, okay.
I mean, that would be like the bar, I mean, out past the sidewalk, that's, that's.
And so we may have this agreement.
It's gravel right here.
Because it's gravel?
So it sits like this. It sits just like that. So that goes right here, where the pavement stops. All this here, the gravel, the concrete parking, all that is where those U-Haul sit. Same thing here.
The only issue is.
Park the little line where the humps walk along that picture.
Yeah, and this one here, same way.
I was sitting out there with a forty foot load of it.
And I, I parked that, but that actually was right there off the pavement.
No, no, it was in the road that I've been, I drove.
In the road.
Well, then that, the whole thing is, is as long as we stay off the pavement, then we're good. Because that's what we own.
But there's not much service there.
Yeah, there is, that's what the, the original.
You know, one of them forty foot tracks?
Oh, yeah.
So did you buy the, buy the car wash too?
No.
No, what's that? Okay. Because I, I'm going to be honest with you, because I don't have a problem with these right here. But when you turn around and start parking these big old things, and I'm, and I'm, and when I'm walking my grandchildren and we almost got hit, so you mean to tell me, sir, are you going to be liable for that? Do you see what I'm saying? If your car's out there, if you don't even, don't even go, the insurance for my grandkids don't. We just need to move on.
Okay, well, all, all I would say is if there's a disagreement, because this shows forty foot and that would be consistent with the eighty foot streets.
Now, I'm good with that, as long as the city keeps up the Eastman all the way up. I want it all paved.
Okay, so, but again.
You can clean it too, Sarah.
If you start maintaining that down there, I'll come and help you.
You. I'll tell you another thing, I don't want the snow pile on my property here, like what Shane put.
All I wanted to be clear about from this discussion this evening is that I think there's some misunderstanding about how far your property actually goes, and so.
Hey, that's why I had a professional surveyor.
Well, if it's a big issue, town could decide whether they want to have a survey, but what I would say is consistent with Steve Spear's survey, here's forty foot, forty foot, and that's consistent with the town's plat. The forty foot goes all the way, I think, we could call Steve, we can call Steve and ask. I think he'll say these.
The city can wind up, like Alyssa said, is go ahead and, when you guys pave it, pave it.
Yeah, and that's good, that's where I was starting against that discussion. That's a different discussion than what we started. What we started was, city has an Eastman across my property, but, but it doesn't. It's actually adjacent to your property, okay, all right.
So with that, we just need to make sure that they're not parking how you think.
That's all, the people are shot.
So, question, clarification, as long as it's off the front of the gas station, we're good.
Let's let our attorney speak, hold on just a second.
I, I would just clarify, you might want to use something like right away, maybe that would help distinguish it, but a lot of times when people think of Eastman, they think of an Eastman that I gave to ONG that went back, crossed my back ten feet in my alley, that I actually own. This is actually platted. Now, he could bring an action, he could come and ask the town to close that portion of, of Blackwood Road and could go and foreclose that right through district court if the town wanted to, you know, get rid of that and let you handle it. But as of now, just to be clear, when we talk about it, it's, it's in that, it's in Main Street, yeah. So, so anything out there is in Main Street or, for lack of a better word, is off.
So for current possession is, as long as it stays off the front park right now, because if it goes further, it will go to the district court.
As, as long as what stays off?
As, as long as we stay off the front park on Main Street. She agreed that she was okay with right there at east, at west of the buildings. But not.
Well, as long as you don't block the load.
Well, yeah, I just see a lot of traffic, people have.
But that being said is, I want that Eastman paved and that road's paved.
Someone actually moved the thing on that incident.
Well, he might want to reset it just to see that, you know, if the request was complied with and the stuff's out of there, then there's not going to be any further action needed. This is the way this is worded, just concerning the Eastman violation, it's not like anybody, nobody was cited for being out in the street. I think the town has conveyed to the owner what the issue is and if the spot is no longer a problem, then there's not anything else to mess with it.
So can, can we come to the agreeance of not putting everything out in front?
Yeah, I'm good with that in front.
It's not a safety.
Clarification for records is, is that under your minutes there? It's not three seventeen, it's three twenty.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Okay, so this one we'll just dive in and we can revisit it if it becomes a broader issue.
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on to item twenty, consideration discussion and possible action concerning accepting the fire department's life net grant in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Life Net was here last month, she spoke under your business with Chance, he had gotten our grant. And she said they need an official line, I would accept it so that I could send her minutes. And we did that.
I will make a motion to accept the grant from Life Net for the fire department in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Stay on.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Uh, twenty-one, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving and implementing a drone policy for the town of Glynco. This was something that I brought in in regards to the drone that the fire department was purchasing. I think a drone is a huge asset that can be used in a lot of different ways. Unfortunately, being, being governmental, we have to have certain licensing through the Federal Aviation Administration.
Yeah, and if it's over fifty-five pounds, we have to, uh, report it to the aviation, so. Do you have a knowledge? It's what?
It's like five pounds.
Oh, it's tiny, okay, okay, that's good.
Yeah.
So have you guys looked into the, uh, drone unmanned pilot license that has to?
Mm-hmm.
I would assume that that's something that we're probably going to have to make sure that we are insured and protected at a town level in, in flying the drone. I would like to see some type of policy just for protection in place, yes, sir?
I have one, I have part one oh nine license, and if you have somebody that needs the study guides because they were like a grand, I'm happy to give them to you and not spend a thousand dollars on the study guide. The test sucks, I failed it twice. I mean, it's not a joke. You have to know everything, including real pilot coming in on where they have control towers and all that. It's not just a blow through a test, it's serious.
Well, and the, the hard part about us is we technically have, have multiple airports in our area that we have to really follow their guidelines. So I would, I would like to see some type of drone policy put in place. I'm good if, if you guys want to draft something up, present it, and, and we can go over there. Have y'all, have y'all picked up your drone yet?
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So is it possible to have a drone policy in place for the next meeting?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Well, I, could I still like kind of template one from him based off the website that you shot me?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can collab together to get one. The county has a, a pretty, uh, standard, but yeah, in-depth policy that's on the Payne County website, if you even wanted to pull it off of there and, and do some figuring to see what we.
That's what I'm talking about.
All right, so we will just, I'll let that one die as well and put it back on the agenda for next month to revisit. All right, consideration discussion and possible action concerning appointing a Founder's Day Committee for the twenty twenty-five Founder's Day event. How did your Founder's Day committee meeting go?
If you want to bring them up, I had a bunch of people show up, I had a lot of teen authors from the high school show up, they were going to help, so.
That's great.
Um, I don't remember all their names, there are a bunch. There's like Ella, Kinsey, um, Melissa's going to be with me. Bruce, the arena ward's going to help, so we have a committee.
So who, who do you guys have kind of set up yourself as a committee? Do you know who was on the committee last year? Is it? Does it, do you, do you want to set a whole committee? Would you prefer you be the committee?
Um, you can make it like officially myself, Melissa, Ella, and Debbie Porter. And then I just recruit people, I say, I'll for help, I just take them with me, so.
You, Melissa Rufflin, Debbie Porter, and Ella.
Ella Clark, Clark, yeah.
So I will make a motion that we appoint the Founder's Day Committee of Alyssa Harrison, Melissa Rufflin, Debbie Porter, and Ella Clark.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning entering into a contract with the Founder's Day Committee for the twenty twenty-five Founder's Day event.
Normally we do three. This year, we were going to see if you guys would be willing to do like thirty-five hundred or four because stuff is a little bit more expensive. That's what we did last year was three, yeah, so thirty-five or four, we'd be happy. I still intend on getting as many donations as I can. Last year we got almost eighteen hundred donations. Yeah, it was very helpful.
Do you guys have any box or opinions?
At least thirty-five, um, if we got the money, we'd move forward.
Do you have a box, Susan?
I'm going to give it to you for a second.
Right, motion has been accepted to enter into the, enter into a contract with the Founder's Day Committee for the twenty twenty-five Founder's Day event, giving them four thousand dollars to start out. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna?
Yes.
Twenty-four, consideration discussion. Twenty-four, consideration, discussion, and possible action concerning approving the completion of the dock for the Fred Clark Lake at Boyd Davidson Park.
Um, the arena board has offered, well, Bruce and his welding skills mostly, but he said we just bring all of them. They offered to help me get the dock put back together. They have the, the boat that they're going to use for a floating dock and almost everything they need. Um, so I don't know what the cost is going to be yet, but I didn't even want to look to what it was going to cost until you guys were okay with me doing that.
Yeah, we had, we had agreed on this. It was voted, tipped from the town, uh, back when I was on the board, and they just have failed yet to do it, so.
I wonder what the price difference would be now.
Oh.
I'd like to have it before Founder's Day because I'd like to do a fishing tournament down at the park. So.
Uh, so how do you guys feel about maybe letting them get some quotes and bringing it back?
Yeah.
I will make a motion that, uh, we have Alyssa and the, the arena board get quotes to complete the dock at the Fred Clark Lake at Boyd Davidson Park.
I'll say.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Shawna votes yes.
Consideration, discussion, and possible action concerning deannexing a portion of the property listed under account number six zero 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 four one four seven with the Bay County ancestors.
Yeah, that's me. Uh, I'm putting in some more trailers out there at my trailer park. And I need to, I would like to deannex a hundred and thirty foot to the west and six hundred and three feet to the south off of, uh, Liddicoe.
Off of Burke Park.
Yes, off of Burke Park, yeah.
What, what is the value in, in deannexing virtually within?
For, to me?
Yeah.
Uh, that way I wouldn't have to put the water meters for these four trailers up here at Burke Park and run lines all the way down each trailer.
And it benefits you to get his loop in for his water loop, completing his water loop.
Yeah, Shane, I've been discussing on how to make the loop, because right now everything out there is deadheaded. And if we move, may have to move the master meter, maybe not, I don't know.
Probably have to start doing some testing with the EQ because you're outside the city limits. We do our testing inside the city limits. You'll probably have to do some testing outside. So to deannex though, we have to do with a public hearing?
Well, you guys could actually, if you were annexing, you would have to, you can do a public hearing to deannex, but if you can, just bring it up on ordinance and take action to deannex. You're not bringing it in. I think this is a confusion that came up last time that there was a deannexation. I didn't comment about it in the public hearing, but really, really just need to organize fast. Once you guys, if, if you decide you wanted to do that, you, you can do it of your own, on your own, you know, or there's another process where it can be done responding to a formal question from the owner. But, you know, you guys have in the past required that, but it probably just depends upon whether you agree with it or not.
Any thoughts?
So. Deannexing why?
Why?
Yeah.
Well, according to the city regulations, to get water down each one of these trailers, if it's inside the city limits, according to.
Have to have a meter set.
Have to have a meter set at Burke Park and a line run down to each trailer, six hundred and some feet of edge. And I'd like to not have to do that. I'd like to have the water meters put on the west side of Newton Lane in front of each trailer, like I've got on the other trailers.
How would you get water to those trailers if you deannex?
There's a, uh, back when we built the trailer park, we put in a flush meter, or flush hydrant, a homemade one that Mark suggested that we put in so we could flush the water and, uh, that's where we're going, that's where we could get water.
You'll have enough pressure for all those?
We haven't had any entry yet.
What, Shane, do you have any? I think that it, I mean, it's a hundred, what is it, a hundred and thirty foot by six hundred? I don't think it's a problem. I think that it actually, uh, it's going to help, it's going to help the water system out there for him to be able to bring his line back around. We went out and walked it out the other day and.
What did they put the town on?
Well, they don't, I think we're going to lose a hundred and thirty foot by six hundred. That's worse thing.
Okay.
That's where things will came. A little more water usage, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
I can make a motion that would improve it. Deannex.
All right, one second. So motion has been made in second to deannex a portion of the property listed under account six zero 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 four one seven, one four seven, a hundred and thirty foot wide, six hundred and three feet long. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
No.
Shawna votes yes.
Oh, well, Skip should abstain.
I'm abstaining. I thought I'd try it anyhow. So it's fast.
Time.
I thought I know abstain was technically.
It's a doubt.
Oh, it is, yeah.
So what are we doing now then?
Well, that motion did pass. I don't know that there's another motion that would change anything. Um, you know, it can be brought back later.
We can just put it back on the next month's agenda.
Okay.
Believe you ultimately do it. If it's approved to go forward, it will need to come back with an ordinance of legal description if you can get it to me and, because we'll have to record it.
Okay. So a motion fell on item number twenty-five. Twenty-six, consideration, discussion, and possible action concerning approving up to a three percent increase in water insurance rates under the sustainability plan to take effect in fiscal year twenty-six. Someone asked you to disable that because that has to do with public works and we can't, there's a line on our footwork, so we can go over.
Okay. In order, yeah.
Yeah. We may have to come back and do the order with the town, but that will be next month anyway. Okay. So we don't really need to, we will know action on twenty-six. Twenty-seven, budget workshop session for fiscal year twenty-six general fund budget. All right, so you should have your fiscal year seven. Seven year, test the color, what color is it?
Orange.
So your top sheet is your revenue for the last seven years and general funds going very well, you can see. Dollar General store really has helped us. We're kind of leveled at the end of the time for the Dollar General store now because of the act of a law that went into effect that you don't pay taxes on sort of foods. And so I think we're leveled about, you know, twenty fifteen and sixteen thousand a month since that went into effect. Any questions on the revenue page? Our lead party did amazing this year.
Yes.
That's what I'm doing very well. Your second page, here's the expenditures for the last seven years. And then we've done it very well in revenues. We do very well in state revenue.
We wrote that.
We still made a profit though. Any questions? So your, the next two pages are your proposed, um, budget. That first column shows you that prior year, so that was last fiscal year. And, um, second column is your current year budget. That's what you have for last year for this fiscal year. Your third column is what we spent for the last nine months, or, sorry, what we brought in for the last nine months. And your fourth column is what I'm estimating, um, to come in, uh, for next fiscal year. So you'll see under these lines, I have zero because I don't know what's going to happen. So far, we don't have an officer, the officer. We do have any tickets that are riding, they're going to the county. We're getting no money from that. So somebody needs to put some pressure on our sheriff to give us an officer. So when tickets are written in our town, that money comes to our town.
Yeah, because they're working pretty good.
That they do.
Well, that's a good thing. They don't want the county to count.
They did, we were since we were being open and then when he re-ordered.
So you anticipate some income. You can always put that in there, but I have, I mean, I can tell you what we had brought in so far. That was only twelve hundred dollars and thirty cents. And so I didn't feel like I should calculate anything because I don't know what's going to happen. So if you all want to change that, you can do that. I will apply some action. In the ball, in the park's direct ball field income, as you can see, we budgeted three thousand, but at some point, we decided to only charge them a dollar. So at this point, I budgeted a dollar because I don't know what you all plan to do. But even if they're not going to use our ball fields except for practice, they should pay more than a dollar. That's my opinion. You can change that amount too. If you will come up with an amount that you agree to that we can put into the contract that they will have to pay. Um, on the park arena rental, I have done zero because we have not brought anything in this fiscal year in nine months. And last year, they only brought in fifty dollars. So I have no idea how to budget for that. So if you all want to change those, then we can change the, um, estimated revenue. Your second page is the expenditures. First column is last fiscal year expenditures. We made a profit, as you can see, and then our current year budget, our current year actual, that's what we've actually spent. You can see we've, we've spent quite a bit and we still have three months to go. And we only have a little over seventeen thousand left in the budget. So I think what happens sometimes is, is the board approves things that you didn't actually budget for, like your four thousand dollars for mountain state. You all do budget for that. So you have to think ahead of time in the next year's budget, what are you going to give the Founder's Day? What are you going to give to the Easter egg? What are you going to give to this? What are you going to give to that? You need to budget for that so that we don't spend more than what we need to save. And then your last column is your requested budget year. Um, that's just what I'm anticipating to come in. Um, the arena did, did gain a, a requested budget of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. They didn't consider any budget for other sort, or, yeah, other services and charges, which is where the electric bill comes from. So I asked Alyssa to figure out what we've already spent on electric and that was six hundred and thirty-two dollars. So I actually budgeted eight hundred dollars in their other services and charges for their electric bill. And that could go over because at this point, it's kind of like a minimum. They're not really using it. But once they start using it, they're probably going to use more electric.
Correct.
Um, let's see. Any other questions? I don't, I haven't heard if the, um, the contract with the Sheriff's Department is going to increase more than the forty thousand. I didn't budget more than forty thousand. Um, I haven't heard anything, so that's why that's less than forty thousand. Any questions?
There's one that's written right here.
Which one?
On the, the arena. So you said that they haven't brought in any money, but here they're, it was almost.
It is true. I think, I don't, they haven't brought any money. I don't, I don't know much about it. I don't know. Um, but they do need to bring some money in once this gets done. And I think they're playing with the budget that, um, if they give this, you know, almost thirty thousand dollars, that they'll be able to finish the arena and start having some events. Anybody here to verify that?
I mean, yeah, they do plan on it. They do plan on it.
I never paid us before and like what was their worth, like what is their twenty-one thousand dollars worth of stuff they still need to buy?
It's fixing materials and, and materials that, I'm, I'm not on the review board anymore, but I do know kind of where they're at. They're needing more fixing materials, materials. They're needing stuff for their announcement box. They're needing, needing stuff basically to finish it up. It's, it's what they're needing. And where you go to buy, buy those kind of materials, you can grab a lot of money up pretty quick.
Oh, for sure.
I mean, they've done, they've done an excellent job so far with what they've had. Uh, they've done a great job. They've got, you know, they, they got the shell of the arena there, uh, that can weld rubens and stuff like that. And that's, that's what they've been trying to do. Uh, ultimately, their goal is to move forward where they can have bigger and larger events, but they're not quite there yet. So, uh, you know, if you're, you're looking at fixing materials, uh, concession stands, bathrooms, and that, that sort of thing, and you're, they're going to need a lot of the money producing those things.
True.
So, um, but in a nutshell, they've done, they've done an excellent job.
No, I, I agree with you. It was very nice.
In my opinion. I mean, they've done, they've done a great job.
I don't know if he's been out by there the last couple of weeks.
They, they were up there working on it.
Yeah, they got to wipe it up.
Just last weekend, we did a patrol bird out of West Town that were up there working on it too, so. They are trying.
Are there any other questions in regards to the budget? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, what action do we take on that budget work trouble?
You said there's no action.
We'll prove it next meeting.
Okay.
The resolution.
Thank you guys for preparing that very nicely together. All right, item twenty-eight, uh, new business. New business that not be fourteen prior to approach down.
I got a call into Rainbow from the fireworks because of the tariffs and all that. Um, what they did, uh, they turned, they, they put a freeze on it and they discussed and they turned back all of, all the orders that had the tariffs on it. So they have their inventory and that, that we can get a hold of at the same price that we paid for last year. So they are in the process of putting together, they're going through and seeing what they have in inventory that we ordered last year. Um, and they're supposed to be getting back with this this next week to let us know kind of where we're at. Um, and then we'll go, once we get that dollar figured, then we'll go to Fire Parker Joe's because that's where we get the ground shows from. So we may have a, a pretty small ground show. I don't, I don't really know. And don't really know what else to tell you guys other than they're checking on it and we're supposed to be getting back with this next week.
So on the Rainbow stuff, I'm going to assume we need to act quickly.
Yes, that's, that's what, that's what, uh, I talked to John about it because of the tariffs and everything else. And he said that, uh, he was told that they, you know, because I, we called and they said they had a freeze on it. And he's, and I was talking to John and he said, well, he said, I, I was told that, that they had opened it back. And he's, and I was talking to John, and he said, well, he said, I, I was told that, that they had opened it back up until the fifteenth. So I had jury call them today, and that's what they told him, that they turned back all the orders that had the tariffs on them. But they, they had the stuff that was in inventory, that they could give us at the same price as last year. So they're going through to see what, what all made order last year, to see how much of that they can fill. So we'll just have to wait and see, see where we're at.
So are you guys good with the possibility of a special meeting whenever he brings up the hacking sense? Hey, because I, I don't, I mean, I'm gonna assume it needs to be quickly.
That's something, we need to act on it pretty fast, even with Fire Parker Joe's, because the, the tariff thing is, it's gonna be, I mean, it's gonna be pretty bad. And if we could get ahold of, of in-stock stuff right now, it may not be as big of a show as what we had last year. But if we could get ahold of it and pay the same monies, we need to do it, that's my opinion.
So if, if, as soon as you get that information, if you'll let Alyssa know, and we'll see if we can throw together a, a special meeting. We have to have forty-eight hour notice to have a special, but I think, I think we'll have that quickly.
Yep, as soon as I hear word, I'll, I'll pass it on, and we'll go from there.
Any other concerns? All right, twenty-nine, reports from officers and board members. Anything else? All right, hearing none, item thirty, reserve.
Let's motion to reserve.
Motion has been made, all in favor here? Yes. All right, we will move straight then to the regular meeting of the Blenheim Public Works Speciality and Public Act, being eleven, on April fourteenth, at Blenheim Public Hall. Roll call, Terry.
Terry.
Skip.
Here.
Susan.
Here.
Sean is here. Consent agenda approval of minutes from the regular meeting held March tenth, twenty twenty-five, approval of public works authority for just orders. Any question over the last second? During nothing, we will, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Consent motion.
Motion has been made and accepted, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Towards viewpoint five, public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, or personal appearances. Anything for public works that's not on the agenda? All right, hearing none, item six, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving water superintendent Shane McLean to cash up to eighty hours of his comp time and setting the date for payment. Shane, why are you working so much?
I'm trying to figure it out, I guess.
He's only cashing out eighty of the several hundred that he has.
It's three hundred and forty-six.
Yeah, because they're not. And we just went ahead and have payroll, Lisa or Sabina, she just went ahead and made the checks date toward to the eighth, but it's a two-year back, so we just came, sorry, signing ready to go.
I will make a motion that we approve Shane McLean cashing eighty hours of comp time, setting the payment date as today.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan is, Sean votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving the purchase of prescription safety glasses for water superintendent Shane McLean, not to exceed three hundred. He can't just cash out eighty dollars.
I know, and, but I, um, just, and I understand if this isn't something we can do, but I, I, I replaced my lens, broke one of my lenses, and then I replaced another set, and then during the wind, it finally broke my glasses all the way, but I had one set left. And I just thought I would just ask, I already asked, oh my, because there were some, some PPE things that they provide, that's not one of them. So I already tried, I tried to ask them to see if they could get some safety glasses, like real ones.
I don't know if you guys know, but town doesn't offer vision or dental, so this is something that we would have to purchase the glasses, but then if he needs them like adjusted or repaired or anything, that would be on me to do, because we don't have an insurance company to do it. Who do you have as insurance?
I don't.
You don't? Okay.
My wife took that with her.
I mean, that's one of the hard ones, I mean, in reality, he needs safety glasses for what he does, and to prevent a winter comp claim later.
Yeah, and they honestly shouldn't even cost the three hundred, from what I could find, you can give like forty or fifty bucks. But I put it up to three hundred, just in case shipping and handling, whatever.
Yeah, the first ones I looked was three hundred dollars, and then as I started looking, you can, you can't, like she said, keep buying them. And I think they're the exact same glasses as the six expensive ones.
As someone who has worked in the eye care industry for eleven years, sometimes you get what you pay for, whenever you buy a pair of forty dollar glasses, it's often three hundred and ninety.
I get what I was saying.
First of yours is better.
You have an opinion, you have any discussions?
I have a few of the glasses.
Okay, I will make a motion approving the purchase of prescription safety glasses for water superintendent Shane McLean, not to exceed three hundred dollars.
Awesome.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry? Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean is, yes. A consideration discussion and possible action concerning an update regarding Wellington sewer project.
Okay, well, so we met back with Pat and Steven with Ghost and Associates back in like November. And we had a plan, we were going to add the lift station repair to Wellington Sewer Project, so that it benefited the whole town and increased our chances of getting this grant. And when we met our LMI score, our income survey, we were at like a fifty-one percent, or something like that, sixty-three maybe. But we were over the fifty-one percent threshold, which you have to have. So she said we touched base right around the time we were ready to put the application for this year's grant. And I shot her an email at the beginning of February, and she let me know that our LMI score was forty-four point four, which meant that you could not apply at that point, that was February second. So I asked her what we needed to do, and she said we need to get a new LMI survey done, and whenever you get that score, that's good for five years. Well, we have been rushing around trying to get these LMI surveys in, and supposedly we missed the window for CBBG grants, so I'm not sure exactly how. When we had met, or while Shelley had met with Clarissa, she was under the impression that while we were getting these surveys, CoEd was putting the rest of the documents together for the application. And then the plan was to meet together in thirty days, and thirty days was April fourth. And by then, they said that they already missed the opportunity. So we're still not really sure where things went south, kind of seven, but that's where we're at with the CBBG grant. We can either wait till next year, or we can start looking into different possibilities, like a loan, or different grant opportunities that we may not know about, I'm not really sure. I'd hate to wait another year, really wouldn't.
Yeah. You know, I'm all for looking at different grant opportunities, I mean, that's, that's always a win, if we can find any type of free money out there.
Yeah, and what Shelley's gonna go over you, over the public works budget here and there, and it actually hasn't budgeted in a couple of different loan payments that we could afford, just where we're at right now. So there are options, I just don't know what you guys want us to do, you want us to look into those options, or just wait till next year? Because we will finish the LMI survey, we have a hundred and thirty-two out of our hundred and fifty-three servings, but once we get those, that score is good for five years. So that will not be a hiccup next year.
Assuming we're.
Assuming that we're actually the score we need to do, yes.
I definitely think you look into options, I, I think waiting another year would not be a great help.
I would really hate to, but. So you guys, what you think we should do, we can all, too?
I think based on the way that's written, there's really not much action we can take, with it just being an athlete.
So I'll, I'll dig around and raise up that next month.
Anybody else have anything on that? All right, moving on, item nine, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving up two percent increase in water and sewer rates under the sustainability plan to take effect for fiscal year twenty-six.
We have approved that sustainability plan either last year or the year before, I don't remember if you know how, I think it was last year. Loan chain is discussing raising our rates, because Stillwater has raised their rates. So I think personally, a rate descent increase is the only increase that keeps us afloat with the cost of everything. I, I broke down, like I did last year, I broke down the average bill based off my household, household of four, at five thousand pounds, for a three percent increase, it's only a difference of dollar ninety-five a month. So it's, it's a little bit, but it does make a difference overall for the year.
I think if we have to stay afloat, there's really no option.
And we have fallen behind ultimately, because we didn't have the sustainability plan in place all these years, and we weren't doing regular increases, we, we are now behind. And it's gonna take us a while to catch back up without just doing this huge increase that blindsides a lot of the residents. I, I wouldn't wanna do that anyways, but I think we just need to keep it a steady increase.
And we're looking at somewhere around eighteen percent for, to even make us break even from what the increase is going to be.
We're gonna go behind that part.
Yeah, well, Stillwater's already implemented thirteen percent, around thirteen percent, and then, and then we need to add at least a five percent onto it, just to make it, just to make it, just to make it work. And a three percent a year, I think ought to be automatic, without anybody saying anything, if the board was there to approve that, three percent ought to be automatic. And if we would've been like that ten years ago, our three percent would've caught ourselves up at eighteen percent when it hurt so bad. And nobody would've ever even known it, that dollar, whatever she, nobody could've, nobody would've known that. That eighteen percent, nobody knew that.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to approve the three percent increase in water and sewer rates under the sustainability plan to take effect for the fiscal year twenty-six. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item ten, budget workshop for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, public works and boards.
So we should have two more color sheets for public works, public works is not less as much as doing my own, you can see that. Have a lot of unexpected costs, so they're just gonna take a toll on the budget. And then we also have to back this supplement, we didn't cash on CD, CD was in last year, we also paid off, we got three loans. And so we are, we are actually going free at this point. We gave our last payment to our Public Water Resource Board, here in March, I forget, so that hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred years ago, whatever it was, has finally paid off. So we, so it is good that we're net free, but with the Wellington project in on, I just, you know, one thing we can do with them from a water resource board is we can come up, we can have them do a valuation, and they'll tell us how much we'd have to increase our sewer, to be able to pay us, know that. So that hundred and eighty thousand we got from them, we paid about ten thousand a year. And so we were, we were able to pay that back, what is a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan payment going to cost you? I have no idea.
What parent did they give us? How long?
Oh, um, they gave us, I don't have that handy. It's a four-year term at a three percent interest rate for seven hundred thousand dollars, and the monthly payment was twenty-five hundred. But I imagine the interest rates are not the same right now, so I can't tell you what they're paying.
So that's not a fixed interest rate, but four years?
I don't know, what do you think then to come back out?
Yes.
Right, right.
So what was that?
The long way here, I forgot.
Oh, that's from that?
That was when USDA came along, maybe it's.
Oh, that was rural development?
Yeah.
So rural development kinda fell through, because they say that public works needs to have its own savings account, needs to have its own F I N. And so in the process of trying to go through that, I'm just not sure, I'm just not sure if that is gonna benefit us. We'd probably have to have separate QuickBooks to maybe public works over here to run it through that. You, you've probably noticed in your general fund purchase orders, that into it cost us almost nineteen hundred dollars. And you know, that was like a hundred dollars when I first started working here, all of the years just keeps getting higher.
It was only fifteen hundred last year.
Yes, it's crazy. So it just keeps going up, but there is a possible option to have a payroll company do our payroll through their QuickBooks, and we wouldn't have to pay that. But I just don't know enough about what is the good side of that, and what is the bad side of it.
Well, there's smart stuff, well, they'll come back out, it's pretty high.
Sure, sure, I'm, I'm not necessarily what I, rural development come back out, but now that we paid our loan off, was on the water resource board, I would think that's the route we should go. If you all are interested in that, we'll put line up on the agenda, we can try to get the amount as soon as possible.
Sure, the information you can listen to, you should see the options.
Yeah.
And that was.
There's no guarantee that we would've got the CBBG grant, because Pat, she says because it's not like a whole town project that's gonna benefit everybody in the town. But that the Department of Commerce would see that and think that that is just upon us. Because what we're trying to do is, we're trying to extend a section of the town sewer, that should've had sewer years ago.
Right.
And so it's not like we're trying to replace the lift station, or build another set of lagoons or anything, which would benefit everybody in the town. And so she has said that to me the last three years, that she does not believe the Department of Commerce would approve that one. But then when Shane was telling us that the lift station needed some work, the lift station does benefit everybody. And so we possibly need to still look at fixing, fixing the lift station as soon as possible. And there's a possibility we could get some R L F money, which we got when we bought that. So I'm very disappointed that we're having to do any work to that lift station, after spending ninety-seven thousand dollars, and what's it, in two years?
It's probably five years or maybe.
They just paid it off, we made, we made the payment for the final payment, and then a couple of months later.
So that company was not a very, very good company right now. Okay, the second page is your, you probably already looked at it, your expenditures. It's been a few years, we, we've made some profit, probably years that we didn't have any major sewer problems or water problems. We're coming down on our tower, so we have that agreement with Pittsburgh, I can't remember what year we're on, but we're coming down to the end of that. So we're gonna have to look at doing something with the water tower, whether Pittsburgh will let us, they will refurbish it again, and let us pay them back, you know, for fifteen years or whatever. Or possibly just looking at getting. or possibly just looking at getting a new, um, water tower. That's just a future project that's going to come about. And it could take grant money if Pittsburgh won't offer us the same deal they did this last time. Um, I agree with Shane that if, if we would then put that three percent increase into a fact, and maybe it should even be more than that. You can see that it doesn't raise a person's utility bill very much. I do get complaints all the time that, you know, local stuff got the highest water and the highest sewer.
We actually don't. Uh, I have looked, I, because I've heard that we, we do not, uh, the actions are very low rates compared to some of the surrounding cities.
And just keep in mind, when you have annexed property outside, you are losing money because every one of his trailers will be collecting a minimum sewer and a minimum, minimum water if we were offering sewer, which I believe we offer sewer to him out there. So you are missing out on those. So just keep that in mind every time you're on it, you just annexed a few months ago. You just, you lose money when you do that. We should be annexing property instead of being annexing. Just my opinion. I'm not poor against anybody, it's about the debt. I'm working for the devil, I'm working for the debt. Okay, so your, uh, your block here is a proposed budget. First column is the prior year actual, second column is your current year budget, and your third column is your current year actual. And so I did a, kind of an evaluation from where we are, current year actual income, to what we've budgeted, and if, uh, so that was nine months. So if I take the nine months income, divide it, uh, into nine times twelve, then we would be really close to what we've wanted, as long as all the income stays the same as it has the last nine months. Um, your fourth column is what I'm estimating would come in without any increases. Your fifth column would be if you would ever approve the two percent, and your sixth column is what you did for the three percent. So that three percent is only going to bring in six thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and eleven cents. That's not much money. That's what I'm thinking. Your percentage might need to be increased, especially if, uh, voluntary increases to eighteen percent, we're going down.
Well, it's coming thirteen percent for sure.
Thirteen. We're gonna have to get that money back.
For sure.
We can't afford to, to be losing that.
When are they implementing their? When are they implementing their?
I believe that it starts to. I think they could start it until the, till the, till the.
Till it's clear. All right, so your.
If I understood right.
Your second page is your expenditures. You've still got your prior year expenditures, current year budget, and your current year actual. You can look in that loan column. You know, we just have, um, two hundred dollars there, so, um, and I didn't budget anything for loan because I don't know where, what you guys are gonna do. I have no idea what, what to anticipate. You know, if you wait till, um, next year and apply for a CPG, there's still a chance we won't get the CPG. And then if you still want to do the Wellington side, then we, you, you have to see what your options are. And if we just find out what the options are while we're waiting to apply for the CPG grant, then you'll know which way we might be going. Well, Wellington project only benefited, I think, ten to twelve people. That's six hundred fifty thousand dollars for ten or twelve people is a lot of money. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but you just need to know all the facts. Um, so if you look at that current year, if you look down there at that last column, you see a minus. That means we have spent almost thirty thousand more than we brought in. So we're already on the negative, and if you look at your sixth column, with the, uh, percent of the increase, you're still negative.
So the way we've funded it out now with the three percent increase, we're gonna be negative seven thousand and a half.
If the spending stays the same. Now, some of that spending was that sewer line that got replaced. The first one on, uh, Burkhardt Street, that first, you know, the ARPA money paid for that. So we weren't really out any of the money. There was a little bit of extra money from ARPA that we did actually spend on the South Street, so that, that from the, um, we paid for that. And I have yet to put the numbers together, what that cost, and I will do my estimate back to Alyssa so you all know what that costs us.
So, well, when you're saying the increase, what happened if we did the four percent increase?
Well, Alyssa would have to put those numbers together to see what that.
That three percent was like two dollars on, what'd you say, four thousand gallons?
Uh, five thousand pound bill?
Five thousand.
Over ninety-five.
Well, in that case, I think we probably should try and go up a little more than three percent if we increase it, I mean.
Well, I'm gonna assume this budget wise doesn't account for the thirteen percent increase that we're gonna get from Jimmy, correct?
It doesn't because I just, I don't know how, I don't know how to budget for that.
So you, we're, we're talking an additional fourteen percent.
I think we're.
On to your water.
So, right. Yeah, I think when we were talking about the eighteen percent increase initially, that we're taking an eighty-four hundred dollar payment right up to ninety-nine hundred dollars, like right under ten grand a month, and that was eighteen percent, so, um, what would that be?
Is that like a hundred and twenty thousand a year?
I can imagine. So ninety-four hundred, ninety-four, ninety-two a month, and then that times twelve, hundred and thirteen grand a year in water, just to loan Jimmy. Almost hundred and fourteen.
I definitely think that's something we're gonna have to address because we, we can't do them in the red there.
Yeah, well, you haven't officially, you know, approved any of that. This is just a workshop. Um, there'll be more lineups next month, and you'll, you'll have to make a decision because we have to, Alyssa's gonna have to put a public notice on the June meeting to officially approve that, so.
Well, it's not changing their rank to us that much.
I don't know when that goes into.
He thought it was July.
He thought it was July one.
Yeah, it is, it is. And that, that increase is off of the Stillwater line is where that's coming from. It's, uh, Stillwater's increased it. We have a scale where it's, where they're showing a ten-year projection. Hopefully you don't get there, but.
But we.
What cost water cost?
We're gonna be lying if we increase it eighteen percent for our local customers and then we don't get our good luck?
No, we're already, we're, we're already, we, they've already increased this thirteen percent. They just can't, uh, start charging it to us until July.
Okay.
So it's already, thirteen's already, thirteen's already locked in. Thirteen, and then, and then, and then Farah is, uh, just seeing, talking with some of the operators and things that are sitting there at the table, were saying, he was saying that he was gonna need to go eighteen off of the thirteen. Was gonna need to go to eighteen to make it even out. So I'm not saying we gotta go to eighteen. I'm just saying for sure we're paying thirteen percent more no matter what we wanna do July, and then we need to figure out what we need to do from there. And then it'd probably be good that if we continued our three percent so that we never have to fill another thirteen.
Yeah, so we.
Unless we want to add it at that time.
With all that being said, can we add, uh, just not putting a rate percent of increase on water sewer rates for next month as well? Cause I, I think you're right. We're gonna, we, we can't end up that much in the red, and I don't wanna hit everybody with the thirteen percent increase, but.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to maybe relook at it with, with, um, some increased percentage on the town side and then what we're going to get on the chimney side. Maybe rework this and see if we can't make things a little better.
Yeah.
So you did make the other motion to approve that, but you wouldn't really officially pass that without audience, so.
Sorry, I have, um, that. So yeah, I feel just that the rate increase back on for next month, and we'll revisit it to make a new amendment.
Okay, how can we put it in before any of the budgets of seventy, I've had it in there before, you being public here?
Yes.
For, uh, the, uh, approving the budgets.
Everything else is on the budget workshop.
All right, item eleven, new business. Any new business for public works? Hearing none, brings us to item twelve, reserve notes.
I might, I might have read there, seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes.
I think that must be the end.